Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, November 7th, 27, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the June 20th, 2023 public hearing and the June 26th meeting minutes. Is there a motion for approval? So moved. Moved by Mary Alice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chandra. Any substantive changes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Any additions to the agenda? There are none. First item on the agenda, we have a presentation from the Champagne County Public Defender's Office. It's an inside view with the Champagne County Public Defender, Elizabeth Pollack. Chris or Grace, who's going to introduce?
I'll try to introduce.
All right.
Tonight, we are having the Champagne County Public Defender, Elizabeth Pollack, here. And as luck would have it, I forgot her beautiful bio that I was going to read. So I'm just going to let you have the floor, ma'am, and then take it away.
Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me and thank you for having me for this presentation. My name is Liz Pollack. I have been the Champagne County Public Defender since December 5th of 2022.
Liz, could you speak a little bit closer? Move the microphone a little bit closer.
Is this thing on?
Is the green light on?
It's on.
Okay.
Usually I'm louder than that.
Better, yes, thank you.
Again, my name is Liz Pollack. I've been the Champagne County Public Defender since December 5th of last year. So I'm about to hit my one-year anniversary. Before that, I was with the Federal Public Defender's Office for the Central District of Illinois for almost 11 years and before that in private practice here in Urbana for six years. I'm happy to be able to speak tonight about some of the struggles that the public defense system in general has had, but in particular in our community. When I accepted this position last year, we have, we were tragically understaffed. We had nine attorneys who were doing the work of what should have been 16 of us. So we were at about half staff. At one point, I had one attorney in a courtroom that could conceivably support four felony attorneys, and her caseload was over 550 cases for one single person, which basically meant that we were unable to provide the level of service that is mandated for us by law because nobody, you could work 24 hours a day and still not make progress on those cases. And in preparation for this presentation, I ran some of the numbers in our office recently. Thank goodness, we have been able to add some more staff. This is a county office. It is not a city office, so you guys have no impact on our budget and not really much you can do in terms of supporting monetarily what we do, but just getting the word out there about why public defense is so important and the job that we do for the community is why I'm here tonight. We had, I believe, at the end of October, the Public Defender's Office was handling 93% of the felony cases that come through Champagne County. That is approximately 1,600 cases per year, which of course does not include the cases that have been backlogged due to understaffing and also still because of the pandemic when the courts were closed for a series of months. And we have a lot of people who are still waiting for their day in court to see their trial, having been delayed as a result of the pandemic. So we have been able to make some pretty significant changes since I came into the office. We now have 14 attorneys instead of nine. That includes myself. We have upgraded the office's technology, so we now have access to electronic files and some pretty significant software programs that allow us to review things like digital evidence in a much more efficient manner. So we're moving forward, but we are still severely understaffed, not just for this county, but nationally overall in terms of caseload standards. So the American Bar Association recently issued a study about what public defenders should have on their dockets in any given year, especially those who are handling very serious cases. And if the numbers are correct, we should have 28 lawyers in the office to adequately handle the number of cases that we're currently dealing with. And in terms of those cases, I did pull the numbers for who qualifies for the appointment of a public defender because it's pretty shocking that we have 93% of the felony caseload in this county. And it turns out that fundamentally, everybody qualifies for a public defender under the standards that are, that are in existence, which are the federal poverty guidelines. So an individual has to make 125% of the federal poverty guideline in order to qualify for our office, and that is an annual salary of $18,225 a year. That is almost everybody. It is an exceedingly rare occasion when a judge will review a financial affidavit and find that a person does not qualify for the public defender. In households with two people, that's $24,650 a year. So we have, if we're having 93% of the felony cases, that means 1,450 of those clients who are our offices representing, they are all qualifying for those federal poverty guidelines, which is a pretty shocking number. I was even surprised to see the numbers that high when I ran them. So we get a lot of these cases, and it is very difficult for my staff to do the work in an efficient manner and communicate adequately with everybody that we are trying to help. That is not said that we are not excellent at our jobs because by, to a person, my staff are experienced, they are motivated, they are true believers that we're here for a reason, we're here to represent the people of this county, and we do it without fail every single day. But when you have 200 or 300 cases at a time, it becomes difficult to maintain the level of communication that clients deserve to have from us. So that's what we've been focusing on is ways to increase that communication, ways to more efficiently handle the fairly massive caseload that we're, that we're dealing with right now. And one of the things that I was asked to address in this presentation, just for informational purposes, is what are our budgets like as compared to the state, for example? And we have room in our budget for 16 lawyers. The state's attorney's office has 23. And that, you know, to a certain extent is expected because we don't handle every single case that comes through the county, but if we're handling that many, then we obviously could use some additional staff. We have one investigator for 16 attorneys. When I started, we had two secretaries for the entire office. And when you're receiving the volume of calls and communications from clients that we are on a daily basis, the legal secretaries were overwhelmed, just calls all day long. At one point, I logged over 200 calls a day coming into just those two individuals. So I was thankfully able to add a third position for a secretary position, so we do have a little bit of extra help up there. But to compare that, I have a total of four support staff and the state has 15. So each of their two attorneys gets one assistant for two people, and we obviously cannot meet those numbers. That was it for the staff when I joined the office. We did not have a social worker. We do not have a paralegal. I just got a mitigation specialist position added to our docket, so that is a social worker who is going to be able to help facilitate things like treatment recommendations, connecting clients with services. We have a lot of homelessness among our population. We have a high percentage of people with substance abuse issues, a high percentage of people with mental health histories. And without a social worker and without the ability to dedicate a person to help connect those clients with their services, they were not getting a lot of the services that I think they should have been entitled to. So thankfully, now we have one social worker position that is now open. The position was posted today, so if you know anybody with an MSW who wants to hang out with me, go ahead and send it my way. And hopefully, that will help us make a little bit of a dent, but I think that the general theme of public defense across the country and locally is that we are just under-resourced. And it's a shame because we do handle such a large percentage of those cases. The financial budget we have for my budget is about $1.78 million for fiscal year '24. 95% of that is personnel. That covers our salaries. We don't have a lot of extra to throw around for other services, although we have made some improvements in that regard. For the very first time, we now have a fund where we can actually hire an expert witness because we didn't have that before. So we weren't able to hire experts to evaluate our clients' cases and claims in the way that it probably should have been. And I think it's pretty obvious from what I'm saying, but the vast majority of the client base that we serve, everybody is at a low socioeconomic level. We represent only people who meet the federal poverty guideline. The, the amount of trauma and substance abuse and neglect that we see amongst our client base is truly sad, and there's not a lot of resources out there. So if, if I were to be able to encourage this body and this city in any way to help our client base, what I would say is let's invest in those services if we can, if we can expand access to homelessness assistance, if we can expand access to early childhood education, if we can expand food security programs so that people have enough to eat and are not forced to take from others in order to feed themselves and their families. These are stories that I hear every single day. I, I don't think that we're going to be able to make a substantial investment in my budget, per se, but if we're going to stop the cycle and stop people from coming into my office as represented defendants, then those are the areas where our resources would be best served, is to try to mitigate some of the damage that has been done to our client base and to connect them with those services so that they don't have to come and see me over and over again. You know, we have, one of the questions that has come up about the Public Defender's Office is why are we so behind in trials and why are we so behind in getting processing cases through? I think that the understaffing from approximately 2021 to the middle of this year is mostly responsible for that. The pandemic is certainly a part of that. When you have eight or so months with no trials, things get backed up. We have a massive overcrowding problem at the Champagne County Jail, although I'm not entirely sure that it's directly related only to those issues that I have identified. But we are currently housing approximately 120 of my clients not in Champagne County. They are in either Kankakee, or they are in Decatur, or they are in Monticello. So that makes it even more significant for communication, trying to visit with people when you have to drive, you know, three hours round trip just to see them. The only time that's going to happen is on a weekend, and so I spend a good chunk of my Sundays on 57 headed north to Kankakee and back to visit with people. So that pretty much sums it up. I don't even know how much time I was supposed to be talking, but that seems pretty significant. So.
That beeper was the indication.
That's the beep, yeah. Look at that, so smart. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We have time for a couple of questions. Chris?
Thanks, Liz. So I heard that the Champagne County Sheriff is going to accept a phone contract where the inmates are going to have access to tablets. Do you foresee that helping your communication with your clients at all, or do you know?
Well, I don't think the tablets are going to help. That's because every communication we have must be privileged.
Okay.
And so tablets are more for the communication with family members and also the ability to access things like legal research and also just ways to pass time, ebooks, you know, things like that, music, so that people can, you know, live a semblance of a cultural life when they're stuck waiting for their trial to happen. The only thing that's going to fix our communication is getting rid of the out-of-county contracts and being able to house all of Champagne County people in Champagne County.
Okay. Well, last question. You didn't mention it, but, and I don't know if you can, but I was wanting to get a sense for how many cases are plea bargains and how many cases go to trial?
So the, the national average is 95% of cases result in a plea bargain. I actually cannot run those numbers for Champagne County because our case management system does not allow for us to run reports. That is something that we are actually currently studying in an RFP to maybe replace that case management system so we can actually run those reports, but I have no reason to believe that our percentages are any different than the national standard. Most cases result in, in plea bargains.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, he had his two questions. We'll move on to public input. If members of the public wish to address the council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Brian. I live in Champagne. I work in Urbana.
Brian, could you state your last name?
Brian Dunn.
Brian Dunn?
Yep. And today, we are here, we have a pretty big group here to talk about skateboarding again, and I just want to say a couple of thank yous. Thank you to Chris Evans for coming into the local skate shop and kind of planting the seed and getting us all invigorated about coming to city council meetings and discussing this. Thank you to the Urbana Park District, who we've been working with for about three years now, and we've got a pretty concrete, no pun intended, park plan for Prairie Park, and that's amazing. And thank you to all of you for listening to us because this is something that we're just so passionate about, and it's just amazing that we are afforded this platform to talk about this thing that we love so much. So when it comes to Urbana and skateboarding, I think that there's just a lot of room and potential for skateboarding to be part of the goals and priorities of Urbana going forward. Skateboarding is just a great catalyst for community cohesion and spaces with skateboarding. It never stops at skateboarding. It bleeds into art when it comes to like spray painting. If you go look at Spalding Park, it bleeds into music. A lot of skateboarders are in bands, and we have shows at the Spalding Skate Park. And it's just, the, the more that we put into skateboarding, the more community we get out of it, which is just my favorite thing. So just, when it comes to skateboarding, you know, a lot of people think about a skate park. It doesn't have to be just a park. I like skateboarding in spaces that are not solely for skateboarding, but that allow for interaction with people who maybe haven't encountered skateboarding before. When you go to a lot of different cities, last, last time I was here, I was talking about Cal Anderson, which is a space in Seattle. I said Cal Anderson, Urbana, but yeah, it's a space in Seattle, and it does exactly that. They just built a spot in front of the UN Building in San Francisco, right in front of, or right before the AIPAC Conference. It was a space that was like a open-air drug market, and they redid the whole plaza, added a bunch of obstacles that would be appropriate for skateboarding, and just allowed skateboarding in that space. And it's really cleaned up the space and just brought a lot of joy to the area. And I can think of a few places in Urbana that could benefit from skateboarding being a prominent feature there. So as, as the city council goes forward, I hope that they continue to think about skateboarding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm D'Angelo Brown. So when I was 14, I was here doing this exact same thing. So I'm less enthusiastic, but I am appreciative that you're at least willing to hear me out. So when I was 14, me and a buddy, we came, we talked to the park, we talked to the council, we talked to everybody about getting a skate park. Phenomenal. They essentially smiled, nodded, and showed us the door. At least we got something in Champagne. But let's talk about something a little more positive. So I was looking around because you want to make it work for everyone, right? Well, we have a lot of, maybe not a lot of issues, but we have issues in the city, and I genuinely think a skate park could help in a great deal of ways. One of those ways is it's known to drive down crime. Skateboarders are territorial by nature. You don't give us much. When I was 14, you ever heard of a bike rack where you can lock up your bikes? Yeah, well, we weren't allowed to carry skateboards places. We use it as transportation, so when we show up to Lincoln Square, what are we going to do? We can't lock our skateboards up. We just can't enter. Well, at least that's changed. But here, we have a place where we can build a sense of community, we can put skateboarders because they will show up, they will be there, and they will take care of the spot that you give us. We've been known to do that. Beyond that, a great deal of students at the U of I, things of that nature, they skateboard, they rollerblade. It would definitely help bring some of the campus life into Urbana, into the city. And I personally think that would do a great, that would go a great deal towards revitalizing Lincoln Square because I don't think anybody wants to see Lincoln Square die, but if you look at Lincoln Square, it kind of feels like that's what's happening. So if you use the skateboard, if you use a skate park in Urbana, you can kind of help clean things up a little bit, you can move some more commerce in here. There are a great deals, a great deal of ways that a skate park could help us, but you, you gotta want to do it. And most of the time, it's the kind of thing that just gets pushed aside because, I mean, nobody really cares. But it helps, as he said, it, it, we have a lot of things like art and music and things of that nature that come out of it, and it gives you the opportunity to hold events, it gives you the opportunity to create an environment where, in an economy, where your parents are most of the time gone from eight to five, and then by the time they get off work, they're exhausted, they're mainly focused on feeding you and keeping you alive. We, our, our current like family, familial system, we don't have a lot of time with our parents, with our children, I'm, I'm a father now, to raise our kids, and yet all of these expectations are heaped onto us to do this great job with the little to nothing that you give us. But skateboarding creates a place of community. If you've ever been to the Champagne Skate Park, you will see older people there teaching younger kids how to skate and younger kids gaining an idea of how to operate socially. It doesn't necessarily happen immediately, but over time, and not even a long period of time, it's gone a long way to restoring, reinvigorating a community and teaching qualities that often get left behind because, again, we don't really focus on those things. I won't take up too, too much more time, but I hope this time that you do genuinely consider a skate park because I think if you really looked into it, if you really looked into it, like looked into it like you cared, you would see that it does quite a bit for most every community that a skate park goes into. I've been here my whole life. I've seen the stages of evolution of this city. I was born here. I'll probably, I travel a lot, but I live here, and I'll probably be here till I kick it. So I would like to help as much as possible, and when you give us spaces where we can come together as a community and talk to each other in genuine ways, I think it's a step forward. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Lockwood. I'm an attorney with Hinshaw &amp; Culbertson, and I represent OSF Healthcare System and its real estate matters. And I'm here tonight with regard to the resolution directing the zoning administrator to file a rezoning application for the property owned by OSF at 205 North High Cross Road. That's in Ward 6 in the city. And OSF had been given no, you know, no advance notification or any explanation as to why this particular resolution has been brought forward. And given that there are no specific reasons given as to why the resolution should be approved, I'm here to give you a couple, a couple of reasons why we ask that the resolution not be approved. As you know, the property is zoned as B3, and OSF had had plans to put a medical clinic on that, on that site, and their plans changed. But a change in plans is not necessarily a reason that would trigger a rezone application. In terms of the surrounding general character of the, of that area, we note that in the comprehensive plan that had been approved by the council in 2005, it had shown the area as containing business, office, and industrial uses that served nearby residential areas. And we don't see anything that would indicate that that has changed, so we don't believe that that would trigger any sort of need for a rezone petition to be introduced. One, one thing with regard to this property, it had been created as a lot back in 2004 when it had B1, a zone, B1 zoning district designation. And it sat there for 15 years as a B1 category property without any buyers, without any tax generation use at that property, until OSF came along and purchased the property because they, they'd had it zoned B3. That's what attracted OSF to that property. That's what would attract future buyers to that property. So if the property were to be rezoned to B1, the concern is, would it still sit there then for another 10 years, 15 years, not producing any sort of tax, tax generation purpose, not serving the community at all? So again, we, we don't believe that the property would be best served by being rezoned to B1. I also took a look at some of the other similarly situated parcels that are in that ward, in Ward 6, realizing that there are some other B3 properties that are in the area, they're next to residential areas, but I don't see any petitions for those particular properties to be rezoned. So, you know, it's kind of a question that we would expect that the city would want to treat similar properties in a similar manner. So again, we, we don't really see what reason is being brought forward to have the property rezoned. We're asking that it not be rezoned. I would say again, although OSF's initial plans had been to operate a medical facility there, and even though there, those plans changed, they had taken actions to be a good neighbor in the property, in the community, and their, their goal is to build good relationships in the community. So it may be that, that you're not aware that OSF, when they purchased the property, had voluntarily entered into an easement and restriction agreement with the Aldi parcel owners that restricts OSF's parcel from operating certain businesses on that site that might otherwise be allowed in a B3 district. So it, it, it isn't as though OSF, you know, hasn't thought about the future of that parcel, how to, and how to build consensus in the committee, in the community. So again, I have made these public comments in a written form submitted by email in a little bit more detail, which I would encourage you to, to review. And again, I would just conclude at the moment by asking that the council deny the application to rezon the property.
Thank you. For the record, we do have the email from Ms. Lockwood, and it will be entered into the meeting record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Manson. I'm the Vice President of Government Relations for OSF Healthcare. I'm also here to talk about item 2F. I'm not going to repeat what was just said. I just want to mention, I was actually on that call, I think it was in 2020, when, you know, during the, the height of COVID, when the, the rezone took place. And we did come before, become before this body and talked about a medical building, but that was in 2020. Three years later, a lot has changed, COVID, and we all know everything that's happened over the three years. And so we're in the situation now where we have a lot, it's zone B3. We are looking at selling the lot, and we are genuinely concerned that if the rezone back to B1 takes place, that as Ms. Lockwood mentioned, the, the property really will sit there, and it will not be of interest to buyers. Again, as Ms. Lockwood mentioned, there are all kinds of restrictions that we've already put on the property. We would ask, and again, we really did just find out about this last week. I appreciate Alderman, Alderson Wilken's time today, had a chance to talk to her and get some more information. We were able to talk a little bit and learn a little bit more about the background and kind of what was bringing us to the, to this chamber tonight, so I appreciate that. And I would just say that, you know, yes, we'd like you to vote no on kind of starting this rezone process. Again, our fear would be that it would jeopardize our ability to sell the property, but at a minimum, if you, if you cannot vote no, we'd ask you to make a, to, to delay taking action on this. We want to be a good neighbor. We've already, like I said, or it was mentioned, we've already put restrictions on the property with, when we bought the property itself. We're open to doing what needs to be done to make sure that concerns are addressed. So if anything, we just, again, we'd ask you to vote no, but if we can't get a no vote tonight, we'd ask for a delay so that we can sit and talk with city staff, talk with, with all of you, talk with, you know, whoever has the concerns, see if we can't work out something so that we can maintain that, that zoning so that we don't jeopardize the ability of actually being able to sell that property, turn it over to somebody that can actually make use of it and put that property in the tax rolls and be productive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Aditha Kapoor, and I just want to talk about why, like, you know, skate infrastructure like should be a priority.
Sir, could you repeat your name?
Oh, Aditha Kapoor.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a third-year student at U of I. I actually transferred here after my freshman year. My freshman year, I was at USC in Chicago, and you can't really skateboard there just because it's like very bad streets, not that many great spots. And because of that, I kind of, I didn't have anything I could do, you know? Then I came here, and I joined this club at, at my school. It's called the Inline Insomniacs, where 20 to 80 of us, once a week, will go skating at night. Even in like the rain, we'll have like huge turnouts. And like a third of us, just from the club itself, came here today to support like this cause. U of I kind of has like a stereotype of like, oh, it's, there's not much to do here. It's a party school. Let's get drunk on the weekends. But this club is proof that skating is not, like it takes away from that. Like it's giving us something else to do besides just get wasted on the weekends. So I just wanted to give my like two cents on, it's good for us, it's good to have So I just wanted to give my like two cents on, it's good for us, it's good to have like, you know, more options. Let's make this a priority. Thank you.
My name is Camila Glowacki. I've been a Champaign-Urbana resident for about 14 years, and I've worked in youth and community programs for 10 years. And I wanted to speak in support of the skateboarding park initiative, especially from the perspective of how it impacts youth. I think spaces that are free and easily accessible for youth is largely lacking in our community. I think we rely on the library a lot for that kind of support. And especially a space that teens feel welcome and have agency over and feel ownership over is greatly needed. I think a skate park would greatly contribute to that need in our community. I think that the benefits, especially in terms of social and emotional learning, are profound with skateboarding. Teens and youth learn to persevere as they learn tricks. They can be learning independently as well as with a group and learn to encourage each other, learn from each other, teach each other, learn what to do when things go, go wrong. It's an incredible experience that connects you to your body and increases confidence in yourself. It's also an activity that doesn't rely on screens. And again, it is free and easily accessible. I just want to again emphasize the need for a space for teens. Libraries, you are expected, you know, to have a sense of decorum and be quiet. This is a space that's outside, you're connected with your body, you can be as loud as you want. I think there are great benefits as well to the arts community for the Urbana arts programs. You can partner with local artists to create murals. The park districts can implement new camps for youth. And I also really wanted to highlight the existing infrastructure that our community has to support skateboarding. You heard from Brian Dunn earlier, but he runs a wonderful program called No Board Left Behind, where folks donate their leftover skateboarding equipment or broken skateboards. And Brian, on his own time, refurbishes them, creates new skateboards, and then leaves them in free bins at skate parks for anybody to take and have a free board. So it's making skateboard, skateboarding incredibly accessible to anyone. There's also the Central Illinois Queer Skate Union that brings in groups from Bloomington, Peoria, Rantoul, other rural communities, and creates a space that welcomes marginalized communities, including queer youth and queer people in our community, and has created a really wonderful space that I would love for Urbana to continue. Yeah, I think that's it for me. I'm getting a little out of breath from nerves, but thank you so much for taking the time to, to listen. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think there's been a lot of skateboarders who've come up. I'm also a skateboarder. My name's MJ Oviet. I've been a resident of Urbana since 2016, moved in and out of this town, but it's near and dear to my heart. In 2020, a lot of us looked to ways of nurturing our souls when it was a really dark time in this world. And some people baked bread, some people drank. I skateboarded. I hadn't skated before. I'd always dated skateboarders. I always thought it was a guys' thing. I decided to go to Spalding Skate Park one time and just fell in love with the community there, and just the amazing women who skateboard in this town. I think it is something to note about Champaign-Urbana is the women who skateboard in this town. It's unique, and it's like a highlight of this place, and it's something that we should be proud of and encourage. The skate community here is super diverse. There's people that are, you know, in their 50s or older, and there's also like children, and everyone gets together and works with each other and create something really beautiful. Over in Champaign, and a lot of us actually live here in Urbana, and I think finding somewhere in a park, somewhere here in Urbana where we can continue to build this community and showcase it as a part of these twin cities is a great thing to do. So I'm all for a skate park here in Urbana.
Thank you.
I'm Andrew Valentine. I'm very nervous. I'm also very thankful. I'm thankful that Chris walked into our little store and got us sparked on this adventure, I suppose. I'm thankful for all these amazing people willing to spend their free time to be here. If you didn't know, we hit you guys with about 100-plus emails.
116, to be exact.
Thank you. But to be frank, I grew up by Spalding. Know it may not be in comparison the most amazing skate park of all time, but for me, it is the best place ever. It is home, it's fine, it's perfect, okay? Like, it was a place for me to go, like, you know? Family things, I'm right by the skate park, I can go be there, you know? And over, over, like, because I'm 30-plus, I've been skateboarding for 15 years. And like, I have been asked the question, like, what would you be doing if you weren't And there's like no answer to it. Like, I would probably not be alive or here, or like, skateboarding for real saved my life. So I just want to make that clear, that it can do something for somebody. People will come from all around. Yeah, anyways, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi. Oh, sorry, I gotta talk into this microphone. Hi, my name is Joseph Shaney. I'm a third-year student at U of I. And I'm going to switch it up a little bit, I'm with Inline Insomniacs as well, but I'm a biker, and so we have some different concerns. Just generally, the bike lanes have improved quite a lot. I would say that you have the one on green now, which takes you from straight from about ISR area right into the heart of Urbana. And I just wanted to say that I feel like there's room for improvement, specifically on Springfield Avenue. Springfield's another major artery that gets you from campus to Urbana, and it doesn't have bike lanes. I still ride it, but it's dangerous. So I think that needs a bike lane. And then also on the topic of bike lanes, I just wanted to talk about enforcement of bike lanes, which is, it's a funny topic, because I'll be riding down Green Street, and nothing against any of the police here, but I'll see somebody parked directly in the bike lane, and it doesn't seem like there's any kind of enforcement for that, which is not good. I'm not sure what the police policy is on that, but I feel like it would be constructive to, maybe, maybe if you're not putting in the hands of citizens, because you've seen cities like New York City, if this was major news, they implemented basically like a snitching program. So if you saw somebody parked in a lane, you could call the police, and you could actually receive financial compensation for reporting that. And I'm not proposing something like that for here, but I do think it would be constructive to have more enforcement and stricter enforcement on the bike lanes, because it really is like a danger, especially as we're coming up into the winter months where the lanes get a little slipperier. It's dangerous to move out into the active traffic to dodge a car that's like taking up the whole bike lane. This is especially a problem on Green Street, and I think it's a problem with, I think, like Uber Eats drivers, things of that nature. But yeah, that's basically, that's all I have to say, pretty much, is that there needs to be more strict enforcement on that. And I don't think there necessarily need to be a ton more bike lanes, because the infrastructure we have is already quite good for that. And so that's all I really have to say. Oh, and one more thing, Bike Project in Urbana is great. It's awesome. And in terms of like encouraging people to get into biking, because we have a lot of students coming in, there's increasingly large classes at U of I. So I've actually seen quite a significant increase in bikers over the past two years. And it would be really helpful if Bike Project could be open more often in Urbana. I know there's one on campus, but it is just an extra resource, because they're only open, oh gosh, probably 10 or 20 hours a week. So it's kind of challenging to find time to go in there. And it's really great for new cyclists, because you can get a really solid bike at like an economical price for, you know, maybe $1 to $300, which is really great for a road bike, mountain bike, anything. And it's just a good form of transit for students especially, because then you don't have to have cars, obviously, and the university has already like disincentivized having cars and having bikes. So I think it's natural to sort of provide people more places to find a bike, because when I was, when I came here as a freshman, it was very hard for me to find a bike. I had to use Craigslist. So yeah, that's, that's all I have to say. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm not going to do that. My name is Matthew Novelli. I work at the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. I live two blocks away from here. My father's from Tuscola. I've been in this area for the majority of my life. Real quick, I just want to see how many of you people are interested in skateboarding? Yeah. So if you could not guess, I am here to vouch for skateboarding. I have been the president of Inline Insomniacs for two years. I went to University of Illinois, and I was a firsthand witness to how skateboarding, skating, rollerblading, roller skating, bicycling, aggressive inline, if you will, is completely beneficial to the youth of this town. I think everyone here agrees that skateboarding has, you know, been there for them when nobody else is there for them. Skateboarding has been there for me, it's been there for vulnerable youth. And I believe that a skate park in the city of Urbana is a net positive. That's pretty much all I had planned to say. Thank you, guys, for listening to us and allowing us this opportunity. And I'd just like to echo everything that everyone else said here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Adam Nichols. I'm from Ward Six in Urbana. And I came to talk about the future vision part of the meeting tonight. And one of the things I'd like to see the council do is to build up more cash reserves. We've done a good job at getting our budgets in order and balancing those over the years, and just building up more cash reserves so that we have another supply line disruption or another pandemic on top of the one we already have, we're better prepared to deal with it. One of the other things I'd like to say is that I oppose the 15 additional police officers that I saw was being suggested. If you ask people in Urbana about how police relations are, many people will say, well, they're fine. And if you ask, and if the people who don't say that they're fine, if you ask them, would hiring a lot more police officers help? I don't think you're going to find a whole lot of people who say, yeah, that's, that's the right answer, that's the direction we should be heading. I did review the why on the logic behind hiring more police officers and how that would help community relations. And one of the ones was review of force incident, the review of use of force incidents. Obviously, that's an important thing, and I think that should be prioritized with the 65 or so police officers that we already have. If we could see things like that, like the priorities shifting among the people we have now, I think that would improve relations, and that would make people much more likely to vote to, you know, increase the number of police and what's going on there. Along with that, tracking the crime trends, there was a suggestion that they have a weekly report on what types of crime are occurring and coming up with plans to prevent that. I think that's a great plan. You know, that's something that we could be doing now. Hiring more people and promising to do it after we've hired more people. How about we do the work first, show that we're willing to do it, we're willing to commit, and make that a priority, and then we can talk about hiring more people. One of the other things is, we do have an on-call social worker. So if the police are out and dealing with a mental health case, or some other case that maybe they're not the best equipped to deal with, they can call a social worker and have them come out and help with the situation. The problem is, we only have one. They only work nine to five, Monday through Friday, and that's not when most of the mental health calls come in. So if we're going to spend more money on policing and dealing with emergency situations, having more of those social workers on-call who are able to be the first responder and come out and de-escalate the situation without having to pull police away from other duties that they have, I think that would be a much more economical and effective way of spending the resources of the city. Let's see. And on the issue of the skate park, I'm in my 40s, but I would go to a skate park if we had one here in Urbana. I don't even skateboard, I rollerblade, so, you know. I echo the, the comments of the previous citizens who are for the skate park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brenne Larkum. I'm also from Ward Six.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Brenne Larkum. Yep. And I also looked at the, the, kind of, some of the proposals that were circulating around, and I know they're very draft. And I wanted to talk briefly.
Could you speak into the microphone more closely?
Yes, sorry. I wanted to talk briefly. So I used to work in corporate IT security, and we were charged with trying to get folks to follow our rules, which is vaguely similar to the police with a lot less getting shot at, of course. And we found that making sure that people knew the rules was necessary, but definitely not sufficient. And we found that just adding more enforcement did not actually affect the outcomes that we were seeing at all. The thing that really helped was enabling people to do the thing that was that they wanted to do in a way that did follow our rules. So I think stuff like the skate park, that's fantastic. That's like a support thing that can help reduce crime. I saw in that proposed budget that one of the things that was in there that the police would like to do, which I think it's great that somebody should do, would be try to look into crime prevention. And I think that we found we had to have a separate group of people who were not the same as the enforcement group, because the enforcement team had enforcement techniques, and they didn't have the kind of like root cause analysis of what, what made this happen and what could be done to really address those problems. So I think that improving social services and looking into root causes of crime and that sort of thing is something that would be great if we did. And I think it's an appropriate function for an additional group that is not the police. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is James Kilgore. I usually speak on behalf of first followers, and we, as you all know, we do a lot of work around the issue of community violence. But I'm changing my topic here tonight. I had no intention whatsoever of speaking when I came here, but then when I listened to the skateboarders come and present their case and motivate it, and what other instance have we seen this many young people come up and approach the city council with a clear cut set of demands that's going to both enhance their personal life and contribute to a more peaceful community and so forth? So I just, I take my hats off to them for, for having the courage to come up here and, and present their case, and I hope the city council will listen to it. And I hope also that those of us who are working in other ways to deal with the issue of community violence will make alliances with the skateboarders. But just one thing, I'm not going to be on the skateboard, but I'll, I'll be in the meetings. Thank you, skateboarders.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Pravi John Fetchalern. I was born and raised in Urbana, and I had a few issues with getting to school in the morning. I live by the Thomas Payne area with all the other elementaries, well, elementary middle schools. And I've always had problems crossing onto Vine and Philo. Like, those are a few spots, because I've biked my entire life, but yet I've almost been hit multiple times by cars, which is not very fun. But I, I enjoy the idea of a skate park, get ice, cycle everywhere, because I moved from cycling to more mountain bike to more trials riding through my friends who are also local to the community. the community and go to through Urbana High School and middle school. I really envy a lot of the other projects going around in our area, through like Farmer City, Savoy, and the Kickoo Rail Trail. Those really bring out cycling and, for me, and skate park is a way of, well, a place for me to have a bit of fun on my bike and just really enjoy cycling. I'm sorry.
Thank you. You did fine.
Hey, guys. Oh, man. All right. My name is Jonathan Robinson. I'm a fellow skateboarder in the community. I've been a resident in Urbana for about three years. I stay in the Crystal Lake area side of town. And the skateboard, the skateboard scene is the main reason why I moved to this town and the main reason why I don't see myself living anywhere else. As a community, I think it's important for skate parks to be more easily accessible for everyone, no matter what side of town you live on. The coolest park we have around here is over there in Champaign. And living like right over here, it's like a 45-minute walk. And it's, it's pretty hard to get over there. Kind of just rehashing what some other people said tonight. When you go to Spalding Skate Park or kind of any skate park, you see anywhere, anywhere, anyone from ages from like five to like 60, 65, it was crazy. During COVID, I seen so many people like start skating from all ages, all backgrounds. It was, it was pretty cool. It was pretty cool. It's still an awesome thing to be a part of. Do, do, do. Yeah. And also, I think that if like you guys were like make a park here in town, this side of town, it'd be awesome to try to make it to where all kind of artists can take advantage of it. Because we had the SIP yard for a while in town, and that no longer is available for graffiti artists, or like anyone who just wants to go freely express themselves on like on a wall somewhere and not get arrested for it. I think that'd be awesome if that was part of our park, if you guys even gave us a park. And then, a thing that I was thinking of, the, I don't remember what, who she was, a public defender, the first lady that spoke tonight. But she was talking about how hard of, how hard of a time you guys have on this side of town with like drug problems and like, like mental health and stuff like that. Skateboarding is a crazy outlook for stuff like that. Like, I've seen so many people get off of some, some pretty hard things, just like picking up the board and making a friend who happened to maybe go through a similar situation or something. And then just learning how to vibe from skateboarding from that. And it's a beautiful thing. It brings a, brings a lot of people, a lot of people together. And, yeah, I think Urbana could benefit a lot from it. And thanks for, thanks for listening. I'm out.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
My name is Tanner Coleman. And I'm gonna be talking about skateboarding too. That's fine. So I think you should add a skate park, yes. But I'm gonna talk about how skating has helped a lot of people that I know, and how one of my friends skateboarding is probably the only thing that he has left. How, in a time in life where skateboarding was the only thing I had, probably like three years ago or something, I would probably skate for like eight hours a day. But the problem with wanting to skate eight hours a day is having to drive 20 minutes to get to the skate park, all the way in Champaign. So if, if there's a skate park in Urbana, less gas money, less money I gotta spend, we have to spend. And I couldn't drive three years ago. I wasn't old enough. But having my parents take me, they would kind of get mad at me. Not really. Sometimes they didn't do it. And I was kind of mad. And I didn't get to skateboard, which is okay. But that's all. Oh, no. My dad was skateboarding, grew up skateboarding. And he didn't have any park at all. Because he's like 50 or something, I think. He didn't have any park at all until Spalding came. And even then, he couldn't really go to Spalding much because it was in Champaign. And he'd get banned from every place on campus for trying to skateboard. So you can't really just do what you love here in Urbana.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ethan Ashley Ferguson. You're never gonna guess what I'm up here for. I'm here to offer an alternate perspective, though. I've only been in Urbana for a few months. I've only been skating for a few months since I've gotten here. So I don't have the same experience as everyone else did. But I'd like to. I think that this is a fantastic opportunity to show people like me who haven't been in the community a long time, that you care about your community, invest in your community, help retain the people that are here. I have friends who don't feel like they have nothing to do here, feel like their interests aren't acknowledged by the community, by the university. And I think that having a skate park here is a fantastic outlet for those people, for retention of the, the people that are living here, for promotion of activity and community and wellness. That's about it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And welcome to Urbana. Anyone else with, to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council input and communications. Does anyone wish to say something? Chris? You have three minutes, as a reminder.
Three minutes. Okay. I'm, I'm gonna try to read one letter about the skate park. Dear members of the Urbana City Council, I am writing to express my strong support for establishing a skate park in our downtown area. This initiative is not merely about providing a recreational space. It's about enriching our community in diverse and meaningful ways. Let me elaborate on how a downtown skate park can significantly benefit Urbana. Safety, public health, legal compliance, and public safety enhancement. A skate park in the downtown area addresses critical safety concerns by providing a designated area for skateboarding, reducing the risks associated with street skateboarding. This proactive measure aligns with the city's commitment to public safety and legal compliance. It promotes public health by encouraging an active lifestyle. Studies show that regular physical activity like skateboarding significantly enhances cardiovascular health and well-being. Notably, a designated skateboarding area has been proven to reduce property damage and trespassing, enhancing public safety. Cities with similar facilities have reported decreases in youth-related disturbances, underlining the effectiveness of such spaces. Quote, "If your city doesn't have a skate park, it becomes a skate park," end quote. Physical, mental, and emotional well-being. According to a survey by the Tony Hawk Foundation, regular skateboarding enhances physical fitness and mental health, making it a practical and enjoyable stress relief activity. The survey highlighted that skateboarders engage in the sport an average of 4.2 days a week, illustrating its role in maintaining regular physical activity. The challenge of mastering skateboarding skills through trial and error cultivates resilience and persistence. This process is not only about physical skills, but also about developing healthy emotional coping strategies. Personal development and positive risk-taking. Skateboarding offers a constructive outlet for positive risk-taking, vital during adolescence. It provides a healthy alternative to negative behaviors, contributing to personal development. The skateboarding community is known for its emphasis on self-discipline, patience, and creativity, which are invaluable life skills. Community engagement and inclusivity. A downtown skate park will act as a vibrant hub for our diverse community. It will foster inclusivity and a sense of belonging among residents. The social aspect of skateboarding, where individuals, individuals of all ages and backgrounds converge, reinforces community bonds and encourages mentorship and peer learning. Economic, cultural, and education, educational contributions. The presence of a skate park can stimulate local economic growth by attracting visitors and supporting local businesses. Cities with similar facilities have seen an uptick in tourism and local commerce. The skate park will also serve as a cultural and educational hub. With 68% of skaters believing in the educational benefits of the sport, it's clear that a skate park can be more than just a place for physical activity. It can also be a dynamic outdoor classroom for physics, mathematics, and physical education, contributing significantly to youth development. In conclusion, a downtown skate park in Urbana would be a multifaceted asset, bringing substantial benefits across safety, health, personal development, community cohesion, and economic growth. Such a project aligns with the city's vision for a vibrant, inclusive, and forward-thinking community. I urge the city council to consider this proposal seriously, and we look forward to its positive impact on our city. Thank you for your attention to this important matter, sincerely, Steve Miller.
Any other comments? Grace?
Thank you. Like to announce another reminder that we have, I believe, our last listening session with wards with our new police chief Larry Boone. This one for Ward Six will be this Thursday, November 30th, at 6:00 PM at Salt and Light. The address is 1819 Philo Road. Again, this Thursday, 6 o'clock at Salt and Light for Ward Six Listening Session. And I wanted to say a few comments in response to our support from all the People for Bikes and Skateboards out here. Thank you for coming tonight. I hear you, and I think you have good reasons for the benefits of a skate park. And I don't think that's in question. I'm trying to understand what the request is. You know, we heard support the proposal. I, I don't understand what the proposal is. I hear, you know, we want a skate park, and that's great. And if you want the city and the park district to make it happen from there, that's one approach. I think it would be much more effective to make it actually happen if it could be collaborative. If you said you've already talked to the park district for a few years, I'm curious what they have to say about it. I haven't talked to them about a skate park. I'm not sure if you just need a space, or if you want something built, or who would manage that. I guess I'm not clear on that. And I'm happy to understand what the ask is, and if you want to email further. With all those 116 emails, I hear support for a skate park, but I don't hear what is actually needed. And not being a skater myself, I don't know what makes something ideal for it. The city, you know, we, as far as I know, the city doesn't own or operate parks. That's the park district. So we don't have any parks to give for a skate park. We do have a lot of parking lots, and we have a lot of vacant lots. And that's what I'm trying to understand what the request is. So I think if there's willing to be some collaboration here, I think that's gonna be a much more effective way to make it happen, since you all know about this topic, and you've talked to people about it over the years, maybe attempted it in the past. Because right now, I really don't understand what the ask is or how we would get there. And I think collaborating on it would be helpful, and I would be happy to do some of that. I also wanted to mention about the bike lanes. BPAC-inspired kind of started a change in our ordinance resolution that we do have restrictions for parking in bike lanes that we recently added, that is enforced with a fine. And so that should be enforced at this point, as far as I understand it. I think that was all my thoughts. And again, happy to hear more and learn what specifically we can do to make that happen. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. I know that public speaking is not everybody's forte. So you guys came through loud and clear. I did want to give you an update just based on something that the mayor had given us today, which are the priorities of the park district in the different phases. So if you're familiar, there's a wellness facility that's being built currently on Washington Street. And that, that's been underway, I think, the past year, I think, is when that broke ground. Anyway, so based on this list that I was just handed, a skate park is on this list. It is on phase five. So since they, oh, you're right, four. Thank you. One, two, three, four. It's on phase four, but it's with a kind of a big list of things. Trail network, access roads, seating areas, shade sales, trees, native landscaping, signage, et cetera. I, I guess what I'm saying is it is on the radar of the park district. So I think some of what you guys have been talking about has been heard by them. But I would also encourage you to go back to them as well, and, and perhaps formulate some kind of plan to, if this is so important to the community, to perhaps change a location in the phase of, of what the park district is planning on working on. So that's it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Chandra?
To, I saw a post today from the Cunningham Township. They're looking for cold weather item donations, including coats, scarves, hats, gloves, boots, et cetera. So if you clean out your closets, things don't fit anymore, please consider donating, donating them to Cunningham Township for our Friends Without Addresses. Thank you.
And Friends With Addresses as well. Sharice?
Um, I just, I missed the past couple of weeks because I was sick. So sorry about that. But I wanted to acknowledge the, the skateboarding community. And I do think that there, that somehow there should be some kind of space made, especially since you're all talking about Spalding Park, or wherever. And I'm not a boarder, never have been, born and raised here, went through all the schools, just like the young man that was talking about doing that. And that his father didn't even have Spalding when he was growing up. But I want, you know, there should be understanding that someone had said something about Lincoln Square, and, you know, that the city does not own Lincoln Square. Okay? So if, if in fact, you are thinking something that along the lines of that area, you may want to try to get ahold of that owner. And, and send 106 emails to him as well. The other thing I wanted to comment on was regarding the OSF resolution. I'm trying to get a grip on that and what that, what we're actually talking about doing, which is, I think, changing the zoning after, because they didn't build what they say. I didn't vote for it in the first place, that's the thing. So I, I don't, I, I'm trying to understand why we would change the zoning anyway. So, and that's basically all I have to say.
Any other council comments? Jaya?
Yeah. I want to echo the thanks that other council members have shared for everyone who's come out to talk about a skate park. I know this is not something that's new either, that it was brought up when we were distributing ARPA money to the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And I think it is an appropriate time for us to have the conversation, right? It's always good to hear from our, our residents, what are the priorities for the community. And some of that is also about thinking about strategic partnerships. So I want, as we move through the strategic planning process, if housing ends up being there and a skate park doesn't, doesn't mean that there aren't ways that we can't support it as well. I think, you know, seeing that this is already on the park district's radar and thinking about how do we support that moving forward is something that, that I think is appropriate. So I just wanted to provide that clarification, because I think it's very easy when you, you put all this effort in, right? That it's already been brought up. Like, you, you take that step, you do that uncomfortable thing, you talk in front of people. And then when if, if a particular idea, a particular way doesn't work out, that it can be a complete bummer. And so I want to make sure that you know that your feedback is important. And that as we're having these conversations about what are our priorities over the next couple of years, we've heard loud and clear that this is something that's important to our community. And we don't run the parks, but that doesn't mean that we can't have conversations with, with our colleagues over at the park district to make sure that we think about how do we support those efforts to, to move this forward as well. So thank you. And, and thanks for giving us some strategies to think through, like, ways that we can support these efforts.
James?
Might as well. Everybody else has. I do want to thank everyone for coming out. I will, I will suggest that using an email tool to forward form output to us is maybe not the best approach. There are good sites available that allow you to do online petitioning.
There are good sites available that allow you to do online petitioning, which will help. One thing I noticed with the flood of emails is they were all coming from the same site. And that, I'm in IT, and not all of them, a lot of them were coming from the same site. I live in IT, that looks like a challenge and might end up getting squelched. But MoveOn.org, other, other places online have petition tools that you could use. The numbers are impressive, and there, there's a way to do that maybe without looking like a spam source. Just a suggestion. I think, I would suggest that coming to talk to city council is a reasonable step about this. Couple of reasons for that. Even though I believe the Park District is going to be the key to this going forward, a couple of reasons why I think city council is a worthwhile place to talk to is we have a public realm study, which talks about activating downtown. You guys may not have had a chance to read it, but it's about how to bring resilience and vibrance to downtown community. It feels like you're committed to that. So we have a, we have a longer-term plan that maybe you could find a way to fit into. The other thing is, if you haven't noticed, and I'm sure you have, a lot of downtown is paved. And a lot of that part of downtown that is paved is owned by the city, all the parking lots. So it is a reasonable place to be talking about what you're interested in and bringing, bringing it to us as a, as a suggestion. I think if you haven't done it, you should take your numbers that you have and direct them also at the Park District. Because if it's on their radar of something that they need to do, what your voice can do is accelerate their plans or show the commitment, the demand. The thing the Park District wants to see is anything they build, they want to see it used. Right? They want to see how it's connecting with the community and making a difference. And with what I see here tonight, you have the kind of volume that could speak to them about where their priorities lie and what they might want to do next. Do we need sand volleyball pits right now? Probably not today, probably not for the next three months. Maybe in the summer, they'd be nice to have. But a skate park, would you be using it today? Probably. Thanks.
Was that everybody? Sharice, would you take the chair?
Yes, Mayor Marlin, I will take the chair.
Just a couple of comments. I, first of all, want to thank everyone who came to speak tonight and those who wrote to us. You were, your letters were thoughtful and very informative. I used to skate a lot when I was younger, so I relate to what you're saying a lot. And I know there's widespread support for skate park. I just wanted to make sure we're all operating basically under the same, in the same context. Because from the, some of the comments that I received, I got the sense that there was some misunderstanding. First of all, City of Urbana government itself doesn't have the capacity to plan, design, build, operate, or maintain a skate park. In, in the City of Urbana, unlike a lot of larger cities or maybe some of the areas that you've recently moved from, city government is the umbrella, and you have the school district, the park district, all the municipal functions, and a lot of other functions under one umbrella. Well, here, it's all fragmented. So you may not know, the Urbana Park District is a separate taxing body with a separate Board of Directors, and they're responsible for parks and recreation in Urbana. The City of Urbana, the city government, has collaborated closely with the Park District over the years on a number of projects. For example, the most recent ones were in Crystal Lake Park. We worked very closely with them in the whole renovation of the lake and in the building of the multi-use paths and a lot of things that really have changed Crystal Lake Park over the last couple of years. We're working very closely with the Park District on the development of the Trailhead and the Kikapu Rail Trail, and also the extension of the multi-use path from Main Street down to Washington Street. So we have a long history. The city government, Public Works Department, et cetera, have a long history of collaborating with the Park District, which is a good thing, because we work very, very well together. But the main responsibility for building a skate park, maintaining, operating, lighting it, making sure it's safe and available and accessible and free, which is what we all want. And I think it's a great idea, frankly, to have a skate park in Urbana. That is going to be under the, the man, the umbrella of the Park District. But that said, we talked with the Park District Director this morning about skate parks, just to see where they were. Tim Bartlett is the director. He provided the summary that I've handed out to city council. They are building the Health and Wellness Center at Prairie Park now. Phase Two of that project is the exterior. And, and by the way, the City of Urbana allocated $2 million in ARPA funds toward the construction of the Health and Wellness Center. Nothing, there's nothing like it in Urbana, and it's long overdue for some, an indoor recreational facility. But the exterior part of that project includes the basketball courts, which people were asking for, splash pad in the summertime, it's very important for the kids, and a playground. There's just no playgrounds on that side of town either. So that's what's up next for them, that they need actually still to find funding for. But Tim Bartlett and the Park District is actually supportive of a skate park. He said itself, he thinks it's a great idea for the community. He's been working with members, some members of the skate community already over the year, not over the years, but to, to, to plan for this. And every person in this room is going to be important. You're all going to be important in the planning and design. Because I think if you're going to have a skate park, it ought to be something that you have a lot of input into the design. You're the experts here. But their long-term plans, as been mentioned from the Park District, is to include a skate park and at Prairie Park, which is part of the campus, the Health and Wellness Campus over there. So I repeat what others have said. The messages that you've sent us, you also need to send to the Urbana Park District so they know how, how enthusiastic the support is and widespread it is. Mr. Bartlett said he'd be happy to receive them, so I'd send them to Tim Bartlett to start with. And he also mentioned that in the past, the Park District has sponsored pop-up skate parks and that were very, very popular. And I'm not sure what they look like, but they're things that can be set up over a weekend. And they're the kind of things that could be set up downtown in a parking lot. They've had them out at Brookins. But at any rate, they were really, they really went over well, and that is something that the city possibly could collaborate. We collaborate with the Park District on downtown events anyway, and events in general. So that could be something that we collaborate with in, in the short term while the planning for a proper skate park is underway. So, so the, the development of this park is going to have to be through the Urbana Park District, but the City of Urbana can be a very strong and collaborative partner in that and help make that a reality. So, so thank you for being here, and please let the Park District know where you, what you're, what you're feeling and the same messages, and especially the ones that you provide personal information and, you know, provide your, your unique perspective on what it would mean to you. And we will, I think, I think there's support in the community. Certainly, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's, it's an amenity, it's active recreation that does all the things you've talked about. And it is, serves a, an age group that there isn't much out there for youth and teens and, and young folks. So, so I, I wish I was young enough to skate again, but I'm not. So anyway, we will, we will certainly be in touch, you know, continuously with the Park District on this. And, and I can just say, we'll, we hear you. Thank you.
Would you like the chair back?
I would. Okay. Reports of standing committees? There are none. We'll move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole.
All right. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend Resolution Number 2023-11-92R, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, M A B A S, Master Agreement 2023. This is fire. I don't know if there's any additional information.
Chief? Did you want to comment? Is there anything to report?
Anything to report?
Okay.
I think all the questions that were asked last week have been answered by email. If you had anything else, the chief is here.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's moved by Jaya. Seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? All right. Will the clerk?
Grace. I just wanted to clarify, you were saying had been addressed in emails because last week we had questions about how often this mutual aid resource had been utilized. And so just to clarify for people who weren't on that email chain, was that, oh gosh, you have it up, you said in the past 20 years?
In the past 20 years, we have been called up twice. Our folks went to Hurricane Katrina, and we went to a tornado in...
Harrisburg, Illinois.
Harrisburg. I know it was a city that's more common someplace else, Harrisburg. And the benefit that we have gotten, we have not called on MABUS for mutual aid, but they have reimbursed us since 2019 about $75,000 for training so that we are, so that our firefighters are ready to perform the functions that they do as the technical rescue team, should we be called on.
Thank you so much. And so then to clarify, this seems like big things, right? Or, because I thought we collaborated more on little instances. Are you saying that's it, like in 20 years? We don't ever respond to campus fires or they'd help us? I thought we had more of that. That's not the case?
Not for MABUS, but we get a, for, you know, our dues are approximately $800 per year to be part of MABUS. One of the reasons when we got deployed to Harrisburg that we didn't make it there is because they were actually, when they called on our support, they were not members of MABUS. And so they are now. Because the resources, anytime you have an event, it takes over the resources of your community, MABUS can come kick in. But our community also, when you think about the U of I Games, there's a big fan and Mr. Fan, they help, that we are able to use to help cool off the public. When you think about Illinois Marathon, we use resources from MABUS. So our community still gets a benefit in other ways, even though the city hasn't had to call on MABUS for major resources.
Thanks for the clarifications.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would add, outside of MABUS, there's frequent collaboration among the departments when needed. For example, the recent fire in downtown Champaign that hit the antique store and the coffee shop. I believe the City of Urbana backfilled folks who were fighting the fire in Champaign, and the city covered, provided coverage for the rest, for Champaign to assist. And they often do the same for us. So, so that is not within the MABUS agreement, but it certainly is one of many, many times that, that local departments assist each other in that way.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Mary Alice.
I just wanted to state, because I was the one who actually initially asked the questions. It's, I am in strong support of this. I think it's an excellent idea, and it's nice that we've been able to expand the number of people who are part of this agreement. We're even going beyond Illinois borders right now. I just wanted to know, just to see how we've been able to leverage it. And, and it was nice to hear a little bit more beyond calling up resources, but it's also training, and there's other components to this that I didn't originally know. So thank you for the additional information.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend Ordinance Number 2023-11-042R, an ordinance approving a license agreement, east half of Urbana Parking Lot Number 1, 123 West Water Street, with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chandra. There were a couple of clarifications that came out of the meeting last week. Would you like to go over those, Stephanie?
Sure. The, the license agreement that the Rose Bowl has right now, they can extend for one year, which would extend them into 20, for 2024 season. So this three-year agreement would be for '25, '26, '27. So we'd be looking at four years total. They're asking for that time so they could make additional investment in the property and make longer-term plans.
Any other comments? Chris? You may ask a question.
Do you know what their investment, what kind of investments they're looking at?
I don't know in detail, they haven't provided, but I know they wanted to do more with their furnishings and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Chandra.
I'm sure it's nominal, but do you know the parking lot revenue that is lost from that half?
We had, we can pull that, and we've had it at one point. It, it changed so much because it went down so much over COVID, and that's why we let them use it. So the numbers are back to like 2018, 19.
It, it would, it won't impact my vote, but I, I will just like to know for curious.
I'll send you the record of it to all of you, so you'll have that.
Any other questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thanks, all.
That motion passes.
All right. Next, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend Resolution Number 2023-11-093R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with SMC RelLC, the Rose Bowl Tavern, 106 North 3th Street, with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend Ordinance Number 2023-11-043, an ordinance imposing a tax upon the use and privilege of renting a boutique hotel room with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Second.
Mary Alice?
Sure.
There were a couple of corrections that were made at the request of the council that included change in the definition of a boutique hotel. So it now reads boutique hotel is defined as a stylish hotel, typically situated in a fashionable urban location. Boutique hotels often have a variety of unique room layouts or distinctive concepts. By the way, there are 37 different types of room layouts in the Hotel Royale. Boutique hotels have a distinct character such as historic or themed, which is emphasized with intentional design throughout the property. Service in a boutique hotel is personalized and may include innovative amenities. The other change was in Section 22-173C, where the item related to the penalty rate of 1% of the tax due language was added. And I believe that was, those were the two changes that were requested. Any discussion?
Grace.
Just wanted to say thank you to staff for working on that and some collaboration with council, and I think that it looks good with revisions. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, we have Ordinance Number 2023-11-044, an ordinance revising the annual budget, ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 4. Omnibus recommend on behalf of the Committee of the Whole for approval.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Sharice. Discussion? Grace.
Thanks. Trying to repeat everything that was stated last week and also summarize a bit. My motivation for changing this, while getting the application going, for changing it from B3 back to B1.
We're on the Budget Amendment.
Oh, sorry. Just kidding.
Any discussion on the Budget Amendment? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And now, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend Resolution Number 2023-11-093R, And now on behalf of the committee of the whole, I'd like to recommend resolution number 2023-11-094R, a resolution directing the zoning administrator to file a rezoning application for 205 North High Cross Road with a recommendation for approval.
Second? That made by Jaya, seconded by Grace. Grace, I assume you want to speak?
Yes, now that we're on the right one. Sorry about that. Yes, so my motivation for wanting to change this from B3 back to B1 is I think that it makes sense. It's what it was originally zoned as. The comprehensive plan, I'm not really sure how B1 and B3 equate because they use community and regional business, which are not the same things. So it's next to residential business, next to a B1 other area. What kind of precipitated this was a lot of my constituents being concerned and kind of bringing to their attention from the zoning board of appeals case for a conditional use permit, which is separate from this. So this does not have any sway on the ZBA determination. Council doesn't have any influence on their outcome. This is just changing the zone. And so this is actually just to do the application. So then it will go through the proper channels. This is just a request from council, if majority agree, to direct the zoning administrator to file the application with the plan commission to then have the process from there. So this is definitely not, if this passes tonight, this is definitely not the last time that we would talk about this. And this is not a deciding vote on the zoning change. This is just to start the application. In response to saying that people weren't notified or that this isn't, you know, the right kind of process, I'd say that this is the process for the application. Applicants don't have to announce or give notice for putting in the application, just like OFF didn't need to originally either. Once it goes through, if the application is started, then there will be the proper channels and notices and opportunities for bringing all of the evidence for or against it and having the proper channels for deciding. So I don't think that it's appropriate at this time to really make a strong case for or against it. Again, this isn't the final approval. I also don't think it's appropriate to say we're going to deny or postpone this when we've heard from limited people. I think it would make sense to go through the proper channels, have the proper notice and opportunity for public input and to hear from the property owners, the people who are wanting to do whatever use with it. But I think that we need to hear from everyone. And again, this is just the application and not the final decision with all the evidence and the recommendations from staff and all the relevant information that we need to make that decision.
Further comment? Sharice.
I guess the issue I have is you're asking us to interfere with the, with the zoning as it is and the owners of that property. I'm trying to figure out, yeah, so explain to me, if you could, somebody.
What's the question?
The question is, are we interfering with the owners? They didn't request for there to be rezoning. We're requesting for them, for us to rezone somebody's property that they have bought.
Yes, that is a valid option for council to submit an application for a zoning change.
And, okay.
James.
So the way, the way I would put it is this is requesting that we return to the original zoning that was at this location prior to us changing it to accommodate a development that didn't occur. I think that if, in the future, if I'm involved with a conversation like this where somebody is requesting rezoning to do a development, I think it's been suggested that we would do that under a development agreement such that once the development occurs, the rezoning occurs. That's what should have happened here. You know, it was done to accomplish an end that didn't pan out. And so now we're putting it back the way it was because that development didn't work out. It was, the goal was not achieved. That persuaded the city to change this space, which was originally zoned B1, back to the way it was before we were persuaded to move it to B3 to accommodate the development that did not occur.
Sharice.
Okay, and I'm, but I'm, my fear is that this is a dangerous precedent to set because, and I agree with you, but you're saying that the zoning would change when the development was, was, you know, would begin or begin to be built and then, you know, that, that could be something that we can talk about for future rezoning requests.
Can I interject here? That's, that's a hypothetical at this point. On the table before us is the actual resolution.
Yeah, but what I, but what I'm saying is that I, I've, I guess I feel somewhat uncomfortable just changing the zoning back to what it was because it seems somewhat disingenuous in the sense that, that we don't own that property. And if we have the power to just rezone something because of something that didn't take effect, that's, that's somewhat fascist.
Well, that, that position can be reflected as this application works its way through the, the process. Is there any other discussion to the resolution before you?
I think I'm going to respond to the comment. I, I, my explanation is we're, it's disingenuous to ask the city to change zoning for development and not follow through on it. That's what happened first. I wasn't here when this happened the first time. And so I, you know, did, did what you expected to happen for that change happen? Why wouldn't you put it back if it didn't happen?
What's before us tonight is the resolution directing the zoning administrator to file a rezoning application. So Jaya.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that I will be supporting this recommendation because it is following the process that is available to us. We're not doing anything outside of the bounds of what is allowable for city council. This has been brought forth based off of constituent feedback and there are many steps that would still take place before any change were to go into effect if that was deemed appropriate. But I think that this is a proper use of the tools that are available to us and I intend to support this resolution.
Additional council comment? Is this something new to add? Grace?
Yes, something new to add this week, just to clarify that independent from the ZBA conditional use permit, if that's approved, then that's the end of it and they could still do the storage unit even if the zone is changed. It could be legally non-conforming. So again, these are independent things. And the motivation, some of the concerns for my constituents is the allowable uses in B3 if it were to be something else in the future versus the allowable uses in B1.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. That concludes the reports of the special committees, of the committee of the whole. There are no reports from special committees, reports from officers. Last item on the agenda are three appointments.
I'm sorry, I, I, I did have an item. I apologize.
Go ahead.
I just want to remind people that tomorrow is Stuff the Squad and it's a food drive for the food bank. And there will be, the squad car, I believe, is going to be across the street in the Lincoln Square Mall parking lot. And the goal is to get as much food as possible for folks who don't have enough to eat. And it's competition, so, you know, whatever motivates you to get out there. And we're actually taking, we, we have room for donations even in the, in the foyer tonight. But just want to remind people, I believe it's from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM tomorrow. And so we'd really like folks to turn out for that. And it's being, it's being, I don't, what's the word, spurred on by the police department, so.
It's a, it's a partner, it's a sponsorship of the police department and the Eastern Illinois Food Bank.
Thank you.
And we thank Urbana Businesses in Canto, Heel to Toe, Enchantment Alley and Urbana Boulders for also hosting collection boxes. Any other reports from officers? Nope, okay. Thank you for that. We have three appointments. Two are to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. The first is the appointment of Richard Griscum to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2026. He's known as Tommy. He's a resident of Urbana for three years. He walks, he works as a software engineer, building language model and software to support the processing of speech into text. Decade of professional experience in language communication and research, holds a PhD in linguistics from the University of Oregon and served as a post-doc researcher at Leiden University in the Netherlands. He gained firsthand appreciation for pedestrian and bike-oriented urban infrastructure in the Netherlands and Finland. Statement included in his application, quote, "I'd like to join the Urbana Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission because I want to improve the conditions for pedestrians, cyclists and users of other forms of non-automotive mobility in my community. Active transportation is a passion of mine. I look forward to the opportunity to use my skills and experience to promote sustainable and healthy transportation options." The second appointment to the B-PAC is from Kui Shi Huang for a term ending June 30th, 2026. He's a resident of Urbana, she, sorry, she's a resident of Urbana. She serves as an analyst planner for the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. She communicates daily with key stakeholders, addresses service-related issues, analyzes data and collaborates with various departments. She holds a bachelor's and master's degree in urban planning, is passionate about active transportation and actively supports the promotion of bicycle and pedestrian modalities. She stated, quote, "I'm concerned about creating an inclusive transportation environment and accessible communities. An academic background in urban planning has motivated me to serve as a member in Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm eager to leverage my knowledge and commitment to contribute to the enhancement of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, ensuring a more sustainable and accessible future for the city." And then finally, the third appointment is to the Tree Commission. It's Paul Don Costino for a term ending June 30th, 2026. He's a seasoned professional with over 33 years of service in the city of Evanston, Illinois. He oversaw the forestry division, managing tree-related services such as planting, trimming, removals, disease control, resident service request. He served as city staff representative on the environment board and lighthouse landing committee, led the establishment of Evanston's inaugural tree preservation ordinance. He has 25 years as an ISA certified arborist and a BS in plant and soil science from SIU Carbondale. His statement included, quote, "I've spent my career working with trees in a municipal setting and have missed doing so since retiring in 2020. I think Urbana has an excellent urban canopy and I would love to help to maintain and possibly even enhance it for future generations." So we'd ask for a approval of these three volunteers.
I will move approval for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for two individuals, Richard Tommy Grayson, term ending in 6/30/2026, and Kui Shi Huang, term ending 6/30/2026. And finally, the Tree Commission for Paul De, De, I'm sorry.
Augustino.
Thank you, for, for the same term, 6/30/2026.
Second?
The second.
Okay. All right, Shandra, you can get that one. Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor, can you clarify who the second was first, real quick?
Shandra.
Shandra, okay.
Shandra, yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Last item on our agenda tonight is a facilitated discussion where we will continue to discuss mayor and council strategic goals. And Darcy, remind us of the procedure that we need to go into this transition.
I am actually going to defer to Kevin James and Will Kolschowski for that. However, I do want to provide a generalized reminder that as we transition between tables or sessions, however it is organized, that there is to be no crosstalk beyond the other elected official that you are paired with because we will be split into groups of two. So you cannot talk to anybody other than that person and the staff. And then additionally, for the public who is watching, anytime we are recessed into our breakout sessions, that everything that is brought there at those tables will then be brought back and discussed as a whole for the public, for the record.
Do we need to officially recess or we can?
We will. We will have to recess with a motion second and vote for those breakout sessions, but I will defer to Kevin for the composition.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, we'll, we'll briefly describe the process and then we're going to go into a formal recess where we'll have the small group discussions, similar that we had a couple of weeks ago. But we'll, we'll describe the process. So again, thank you for having me back here as we continue the mayor and council strategic planning, goal setting. So for tonight, we're going to be talking about the, kind of the, the most measurable step of action steps. So we've talked about your strategic areas, which you've kept, and then also the strategies under each one of those that have been finalized as well. So the goal is we're going to have small group discussions where two elected officials will be at, will have four tables. And what we're going to do is we're going to have staff stay at the table and the elected officials will rotate. And so based on our time tonight and the time to talk about action steps, I'm proposing that we take one hour recess where then you'll have about 15 minutes at each table to talk. That might not seem like a lot, but there's already been a lot presented ahead of time. I know Will has information that he compiled and they had, they've seen that ahead of time. You've seen that ahead of time. And so this will give you an opportunity for each one of the four strategic areas to conversate with your fellow elected official, but also staff that's been pertinently decide, decide, you know, assigned to each area. So you will have an opportunity to talk on all four areas in these action step conversations. At the end of that recess, we will come back and then we will review council as a whole and start to make some decisions as you outline your action steps. Does that sound like a process that we can handle? I know we're tight on time, but I think we can get there. So do we need to, should we do the layout before we officially call the recess?
It probably makes the most sense.
Okay, so we're gonna-
That way the questions are captured.
Yeah, so we're going to have four tables. We're going to have one back here. So this is what we're going to do. Staff, you might not, might already know where to go, so if you do, if not, Will's your man. All right, so we're going to go, the strategic area is public safety and well-being. So any staff that would be pertinent for public safety and well-being would be at that table. There's a table here. That'll be housing, strategic area number two. Right here will be strategic area number three, infrastructure. And then back there will be strategic area number four, economic health. How you guys paired up last week is fine with me. If you want to shake that up, that's up to you. Any suggestions? Stay with, stay with your dancing partner? All right. And then so two of you will go to each table. That's where you'll start. I'll rotate you counterclockwise when we officially call the, during the recess, I will call that out. Yes?
So Will, were you able to give us the?
I have handouts and some pages for notes as well.
Will has information. All right, so before we, before we start moving as a council, do I, do we need to officially call into recess 160 minutes?
Yes, but we need to-
Can I ask, did Will have any additional? Okay, go ahead.
So we need to have a motion to recess for 60 minutes to break out into these small group decents.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second, okay. Moved by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice to go into recess for 60 minutes.
Voice vote.
Voice, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right.
All right. Doing all right.
No, no, you're good, you're good, you're good.
All right. We are going to rotate. All right. Are we ready to rotate? Yes. Okay. So we're going to rotate clockwise the elected officials. So we start in this corner. We'll just go here. The elected official's here. We'll go over here. Rotating clockwise. As you rotate, when you get to your new table, I will ask the staff, are we listening? I know, I hear a lot of chatter. As we rotate, the new elected officials at your table, staff, I would like for you to fill in what the previous individuals generally talked about and we will continue to build consensus. So elected officials, please rotate clockwise like this. Mayor? Mayor's team, Sharice? Clockwise. You're in the far corner. All right.
We got the chairs?
All right. So again, we have the new, the elected officials are new to the table, but the staff has remained the same. So staff, please fill them in generally on what you've been talking about. So staff, please fill them in generally on what you've been talking about.
Apple, that's it.
Three minutes till we rotate, three minutes.
Should we, buddy?
Alright, we're gonna do the switch again. So, rotating clockwise to your third group. Feel free to say goodbye to your staff members. Alright, let's rotate, you can hear me, I know Rich can hear me, he's looking at me. So, let's rotate clockwise. And again, as the new elected officials come in, you can give a review of what, staff can give a review of what they've heard the other groups talk about. Alright. Alright, let's rotate. It's been fun. What are we talking about?
...
All right. Can we wrap up our conversation and rotate your last rotation? We have 14 minutes left before we have to officially come out of our recess. Please rotate. Let's rotate to our last table, last table.
All right, we have spent sixty minutes in recess, so we will need to come back as an entire group, and we can continue this process.
I think we need to sign.
I know.
All right, so we are back from recess.
We're now back from recess.
Well stated. All right. It's amazing how sixty minutes goes by really fast. All right, so I'm gonna ask the council and the mayor, how do you guys want to proceed? That being prefaced, what are your takeaways from your discussion? These are pretty open-ended questions, but I've heard a lot of conversations, and that was sixty quick minutes of talking about a lot of different strategies. Does anybody have any comments on... Yes, Sharice?
It seems like we have accomplished quite a bit of the goals that we had put forward a couple of years ago, and there's some stuff that we haven't accomplished, but it was... Some of that would be problematic anyway. At least that's what I got from going around to all the...
Yeah, so you guys have accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
But so setting that next set of goals, obviously, is still in that conversation part?
It's difficult for me to think about what's next because there's already a list of what's next.
Yeah, yes, yeah, potential, yeah.
Yeah, so it, you know, or to add anything, it... It was really difficult for me to think about, well, what else do I want to add? Because some of the things, at least that pertain to my ward, still are not done, so I'm just trying to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any comment on the process? Yes, Mary Alice?
So I think we really struggled at each table to figure out what the process was going to be as we go through it. And we spent a lot of time kind of talking about that, but not really going linearly down the line and making decisions. We had some kind of overall thoughts in the areas, but we certainly weren't able to talk through every single one.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would echo that. I think by the last group, we were a little bit more efficient, but even with that, we didn't get through everything, so it just wasn't enough time.
James?
Yeah, just kind of following along, a couple of things I've heard is adding things to this list is a little... There are things that have come up that people want to add, but this list was a good strategic list for this council for the time period that we had, and so adding a lot more on it when there's still significant things to be done that we started out saying we wanted to do, feels like we're just, you know, putting them... We're just adding on things that now we're not going to be able to accomplish everything on our list before we're done. And so I really focused on what's left that needs to get done, that we already committed to, rather than, or nuancing some of those things based on new knowledge, rather than adding completely new things. Because let's face it, it's eighteen months. I know we said it's for two years, but for...
Yeah.
There will be change then, and there will be new ideas, and it'll be hard, and maybe some of these things will get shelved, and we've thought about it, that's okay, but adding too much more is not realistic.
Okay. Well, the reason I bring that up is, based on the structure we've had so far, if I said, all right, each group tell me all your different ideas, I think we'd hit the hard stop at eleven. And it would be a lot that we're flushing out, some with, okay, let's keep repeating, or let's keep focusing on what we still have left, maybe there's some new ideas. And so I'll be honest with you, it's really up to you on how do you want to proceed, based on our time and based on the process that I've heard. You know, I could say, we could go strategy by strategy, and you could tell me your top priority or action step, even if it's an existing one, of what you think your team still identifies, and we could work through that. There's also an option, do we end this discussion tonight and somehow take those notes and really formulate more specific ideas that are something that can be consumed? I know we've talked, you know, whether it's flushing out, wordsmithing more based on your notes from your conversations. I'm open to suggestions. I just really want to know what the council... Do you guys want to start to work through and try to nail down action steps for each one of these? Grace?
Yeah, I think we're going to need to. Yeah, what I had envisioned and hoped and requested was kind of like the whiteboards and, you know, like we had last time around, piece of paper, and taking straw polls and getting on the same page. I do think we need to straw poll every action item in hopefully a quick way. I was kind of hoping that as we went around in groups that we would have, like, here's the summarized list of some of the input we got, and some of the updates or recommended changes, so we could just go through like that. I feel like if we stop it here tonight, I don't... I can't really say where we left any of these groups because we haven't talked about it together.
Okay.
I don't think any one person or group has like an official, "we agreed on this tonight" because we haven't had that conversation yet.
So how do you want to have that conversation? James?
Well, I'm just gonna say, I'm not sure how we do that conversation over the next hour when we really don't have a summary list of what's out there. I don't see that there's been an aggregation of the ideas that have been discussed in such a way that we can systematically assess them at this point in time. Maybe, maybe I'm missing something that you did while we were moving around, but you don't have an aggregated list. Like, we worked off the last time and did the straw polling and the up and downing of to get through the last step.
Well, last time we had eight hours. This time we've had two.
Understood, but you said, what can we do in the next hour? I think we can...
Let's start talking about the list.
We can talk a lot.
You're gonna tell me your list.
I don't know what I'm talking to, though.
Well, do you have a list?
I've got, I've got... There's one group that I know that all four people went through and what they talked about, right? That was the last group I stopped at.
One group had an idea of what they talked about?
No, no, I got to this group over here. This was my fourth group. That, at that group, I kind of had a sense of what all had been talked about. Over here, I only knew what happened in the first conversation, and so now I'm gonna be reacting for all the rest of them to stuff that's news.
Okay. So do we, I mean...
Point in time where maybe I'm not the best equipped, either focus or tiredness or what have you, to go through it. That's all I'm saying.
Any suggestions? Yes, Chandra?
So to me, it kind of sounds like we need one more of these, and maybe you're here, maybe you're not here, but... So like, the staff pretty much took notes as we discussed, so they can say, for instance, area, strategic area one, public safety, they can write down all the action items that each of the four groups came up with, and then we have that cohesive list, and then do that for all four areas, and then, you know, the end of another council meeting, we, you know, do the straw polls and vote up and down which action items we want to keep or eliminate or whatever.
I was just gonna... I like your suggestion, only I was gonna say that maybe at another probably committee of the whole meeting, instead of us having a large agenda and then having an hour to do this, we have a small agenda and have two hours. That would make more sense to me, rather than... I'm, myself, I'm on a time. I'm on a limit, time limit. So for me, I don't necessarily want to cut out, but I will, and then I'm not a part of everything else because I have other responsibilities.
Yeah.
Okay, so my point is that if we don't have such a long agenda, we don't do this at a time when we have a very long agenda. We do it when we have a short agenda, a couple of business items, and then we could spend more time finishing this up, rather than trying to do it in a hurry and halfway.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think what's been shared makes sense in a lot of ways. My only concern is that I know, at least for some of the groups that I was in, we didn't get to all of the different possible action items, so there wouldn't be staff notes about those because we didn't even get to them. So I think that there's gonna need to be an additional round of feedback gathering, and I think it needs to be more than a couple days, and it needs to not be over a holiday. Because I know that I have not been able to contribute to the extent that I would like to because either it was a really quick turnaround time or because there was a holiday. So I know it's important for us to get this moving. I think that's something, none of us want to drag this out as long as we did last time, but I also think that there needs to be more time for input, whether it's in-person or if we're consolidating information that, you know, that puts, you know, asking staff to pull that all together, and then for council and the mayor to look at it and say, okay, well, were there things that were missed because we didn't get to them? I think there's... I'll be honest, I'm not sure how much farther along we are tonight than we were before we started, because there's stuff we just didn't even touch. And I know that's because we're trying to fit a lot into a short period of time, but I don't know. I think it's difficult for us to... Everyone's gonna hate me for saying this, but I don't know that we can fit it into a normal council or committee of the whole meeting. Because even if we don't have a lot of items on the agenda, you know, tonight, we had a whole bunch of people who were really passionate about something and wanted to talk to council, right? So I don't know that I have a specific time in mind, but it might be something where we have to do something more like last time where it's noticed, and it's a larger chunk of time. After the holidays is the challenge.
I'm just here to help out. Carol, would you like to say something?
I would, thank you. First of all, I appreciate... I think taking the time to get it right is really important. That's why the goals that we had over the last two years have been so powerful, that we were able to accomplish so much, because it was a real collaboration between staff and the council, and things, like, they made sense to staff, right? They, and there were a few disconnects, but by and large, I think it was really, really good. So appreciate the willingness to spend more time. We were trying to avoid having a special meeting because we, you know, we didn't get lots of positive feedback about that. However, I think we're probably there now. As you said, you know, some things you can't control. You know, we had people come in, and that's the nature of a public meeting. So if you're willing, you know, we'll find that time and give us some guidance about when. And I know that we also got some feedback that it was really important to have a facilitator. I think, you know, Kevin has been feeling like maybe his contribution hasn't been as robust as maybe it was before, so I think it would be helpful if you could tell us whether you really want Kevin to make the trek again, because I know he will, and he'll make himself available, or, you know, we'll work around his schedule, but if you want him here. And then I think it would also be helpful if we could get some guidance about whether the sentiment is shared with what I heard from James and from Sharice, which is, you know, there's... It feels like there's a strong desire to finish what we started in some cases, and some of them we did. We checked the box, and now we're ready to move other things up. And in other cases, we would literally have to say, we're pulling X out as a priority and substituting Y in its place if we want to manage it so we only have three-ish action items under any one area, so that we don't end up with too many things. So I think a little guidance now from you all about all of that would help us just organize it for the next round.
I would, from my perspective, what would be helpful for me at this point is to go back through the existing action items, and each one of us perhaps cross out the ones we think are completed, or the ones we think we don't need anymore, or maybe they become outdated. So we evaluate our existing action items to see if we should continue doing them or update them. And then on all these proposed action items, there are some that you want to talk about more. You absolutely... I like the approach we used at our, but yes, maybe, no. So go through all these proposed action items under each strategy. Yes, definitely, maybe, we can talk about it. No, I don't want to do that. And at least we could start eliminating, maybe from that perspective, because there's just... It's hard to organize this at this point.
So one thing I brought up in one of the groups as I was going through this is there's lots of suggestions to add in grants. We should grant X number, you know, $200,000 to youth so that they can have summer jobs, or we should grant $200,000 to first followers and so forth. And I said, well, one of the problems here is we've got two parameters. We have, what is the funding available? So what's the bucket of money that we have? And what is the staffing that we have in order to administer those grants? And if we come up with an idea, okay, well, we think that we should target 200,000, 400,000, whatever it is, we need to make sure that we have those monies before we can start going through and saying, oh, yeah, I want to allocate 20,000 here and 50,000 here. So as I look through that, there's a lot of these things that have grants. So what I'd rather do is have that conversation of what is a realistic pot of money for grants? And then, how does it get divided up that way?
And we have social service, a pot of social service money. We had 300,000 last year for that. If you want to increase that, which is a budget decision, that's the framework for all of these decisions.
Right, and so, and to that end, and when we go through the social service, it used to be called consolidated social service. I think it's just social service grants now. It does give us an opportunity to say, our goal is to fund these items. We're putting highest priority on X, Y, and Z, so that could like account for some of this. Now, maybe it needs to be retooled and not called social service grants. Maybe it could be social service grants and community grants.
Community service, community grants.
Community grants, and that would allocate that. So I just wanted to pose that because that would knock the list down considerably if we just started with those two parameters first.
If you don't mind, I think what would be more useful... So the action items are really a guide for staff of what you want us to be working on for the next two years. And so what would, I think, be more powerful is what do you want to accomplish by making such a grant? That might, and so if it gets to budget time, and there needs to be money made available in order to help accomplish something, but there's a lot of ways to get to an end place, and it's not just necessarily throwing money at it. So I think that would be more useful to staff of what do you want us, where do you want us to be headed? What direction do you want us to go in, not just task us with managing a grant, like... And not just task us with managing a grant, like, "Oh, you didn't ask us. Maybe we could have told you how to get there a different way." So we're interested in knowing what's your endpoint.
Yeah. Sorry, yeah.
Anyway. I liked the mayor's suggestion about doing a yes, no, maybe poll, like with ARPA. I think that makes sense to take these ones and have a poll, so we have some idea and a little more review. I was one of the people who did really appreciate having our facilitator. So thank you, Kevin, for coming back down again. Where I feel like we really got to have... To see you shine and really utilize your skill set is in that whole group discussion. Look, I really appreciate that you were here tonight, but I feel like we didn't get to really utilize your skills as a facilitator. And what I really liked was last time with you on the whiteboard and say, "Okay, this is it. Here's the, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, discussion points. Okay, moving on." I think you really helped us with that part. And so I think that if... I think that part still needs to happen, and I would appreciate still having facilitation for that part. Maybe if there are steps that we still need to do before then, maybe we don't need the facilitator if we still have more steps before then. But I think for that point, I would really appreciate having your skill set on that again.
Thank you. Yeah, I think based on what I've heard and kind of what I would suggest is, because there is still a lot of this plan, which I've seen with other clients, where essentially you're going through a strategic planning update, is going through and first identifying what is still important, not done, and still needs to be there. And I think... So this is kind of a... It's marrying all the different ideas. So I would suggest that on the existing action steps for all of these strategies, and having those... And, you know, I like this page, how Will designed it. It was a blank page, but if you filled that in, like, "Okay, here's our existing strategies." Eventually having what are still relevant, what's still a priority. As you come up with new... Or sorry, new action steps, I apologize. As you come up with new action steps, I think that starts to blend in. I would suggest, using what Mary Alice talked about, and Carol, if you have something new, where is this... Is this a high priority? Because it's something new? Is it really replacing something? And then obviously, if there's staffing and funding resources, having that outline there. I would suggest compiling that from the notes that you've had from your conversations with your staffs, whether that's the elected officials or staff coming up with something very visual. Because it could look like you have six, seven, eight action steps, but that's not going to be the end result, because we just know that's not realistic over the next 18 months. And then having those conversations where you're like, "Okay, is the existing one still there? Okay, two of the three are. What of the three or four new ideas? Which one's the top priority to be that third action step?" Or maybe, because you're really trying to keep it in a realistic timeframe. So I think it's marrying all the different ideas. That would be my suggestion, that you guys go through that exercise. Because that's... And as even Carol pointed out, we were talking, wordsmithing that to make sense. Right now, it's hard for us to wordsmith at 10:13 after we've had 60 minutes of speed conversation, so... Yes?
And for the yes, no, maybe survey or something of the likes?
Yes.
I was imagining that we were talking about including the proposed new actions.
Yeah, you could... Yeah, if you have that format, and we did that with the strategies, I think if that works for you guys, I would recommend that as well. Something that you start to get, you know, "Yes, this is still important," or "Yes, this is new, and we think it's now important," or the "No" or "Maybe." So I think as you kind of combine that, having that next round of discussions, however you want to do that, through a survey, through an internal discussion, is gonna start to flush out a lot more, where you can then finally get around to having that final conversation and finalizing. The action steps are the hardest part, because they are the biggest details of the whole plan.
And so then, yeah, I think that makes sense. If we do another round of surveys, then maybe possibly another step where we discuss if people have questions, or I think some ideas could use a little more explanation still, maybe before we do a straw poll on them, if there's some questions, and then do the group facilitation and straw poll and kind of get down to a final one. So logistically, would our lovely staff, Will and Carol, are willing to compile some of these thoughts and send us a survey-type thing?
I think there were some new suggested action steps that came out of the discussion today, too, so...
Who has those notes, do you think? The staff? Do you guys have some notes from your tables?
Mostly staff, but I just don't want to just be like you all, but...
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, that's...
They seem to be volunteering.
It's fair. If staff has some ideas that they heard from multiple groups or through some of your conversations, if that could be, you know, either, you know, compiled, or at least for your area, then you have something to work with in identifying that.
So you need to update the existing action items and add any proposed new actions that came out of tonight's.
Yeah, because eventually, what I'm hearing is visually, and you need to see this list of what are we working with? You know, as James pointed out, there's a lot of things here, like, we're not just... It's not, "Those are all done, all new in." This is not that... There's still gonna be probably these existing ones that still have... They're almost there, or they're not quite there, or they're not even started, but they should be there, before you can even start to evaluate potentially the new ones. And unless that a new one really just supersedes everything, but you kind of need to see that as those lists.
And the framework we're working under is no more than three action steps under any particular strategy. Is that it?
I can't tell you the limit. I can only give you suggestions.
Remember that being a...
If you guys have what worked last time, I'd say, go with that. But I would encourage clients to try to keep those at a reasonable amount, because these are not simple action steps. There's a lot to these. You know, some of them might be, "We're gonna grant some money," but there's still a lot of work to that.
Oh, they're complex.
Yeah, yes. So my suggestion is, two to three action steps under each strategy would make it realistic. And that could be hard, because it could already be there. And new ideas, still documenting them doesn't mean that they go away forever, as you told the skateboarders. It doesn't mean we haven't heard you, just means we might not move on it right now. So that would be my suggestion. But having it more in a compiled fashion, now that we've had these discussions from staff, from your own notes, from your own table conversations.
Well, I... Just based on experience from years past, where we ended up... We had accumulated action steps over the years, and at one point, we had something like 21 pages of council goals, which was absurd, and most of it didn't get done. So the way we've approached it this time is way more effective. So I think...
I applaud your... From two years ago, how you guys had, what I saw, the end results on your website and how you guys managed that. You guys had a very realistic amount. And so I applaud, as a government agency and someone who has worked for a government agency, getting it to be realistic. And you even see, I mean, you worked on it, and you've accomplished a lot of things. It's still... There's still a lot of work to be done. So kind of taking that same approach. So documenting the new, documenting what stays, but then really having that conversation of like, "Okay, what is really the still top priorities?" And that was something we just didn't have time to get to, really identifying those priorities. I think that's what Grace was talking about with the more up-down voting and all that. So that's what I would suggest is your next step, is to compile and then have something more visual and linear of what you can look at. Does that make sense? All right.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. And with that, there is no further business before this council. Thank you all very much.